All right, ladies and gentlemen, it's six o'clock, so we'll bring the meeting to order and get started. Sheriff, whenever you're ready.
Mayor Holland.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Taylor.
Here.
Commissioner Brownlow.
Here.
Commissioner Sanderson.
Here.
Commissioner Sawyer. Commissioner Wooton.
Here.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to excuse Commissioner Sawyer for personal reasons.
All right, motion is on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, motion is carried. And this time, I'd like to invite up to the podium Pastor Joe Strauss from Encounter 61. He's going to lead us in our invitational prayer. Welcome back after a long time, sir. Good to see you.
Thank you for inviting me. Hey, how's everybody tonight? Let us pray. Father God, we just come to you tonight and we just thank you, Lord, for all the mercy and grace, Father, that you've shown us. And we thank you, Father, for the men and women who are gathered here tonight, Father, God, to seek your counsel and to do what's best for this community. And so, Father, as we begin the meeting tonight, Father, we ask God that your mercy and peace would be upon it, that your wisdom and knowledge would speak to each one, Father, as they make decisions. And, Father, we pray tonight that they make decisions, Father, that are best for all people tonight. And so, Father, as they go about their business, we pray, Father, that they would also be about your business. And so, Father, we thank you again for all that you've done for us. We thank you for these men and women, Father, that give up their time, Father God, to serve others. And we thank you for it all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Joe. Very good to see you again, sir. Thanks for coming. All right, if everyone will stand with me and face the flag for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, motion, or, excuse me, item number five would be the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to propose one amendment to the agenda to move the public comment, which is currently numbers seventeen and eighteen forward, to appear in between numbers five and number six. And then, we'll address this going forward in item number thirteen.
You want to move the public comment that's for budget and the general public comment, seventeen and eighteen, to item number six?
Yes, sir.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion is carried. Do we do that right, Council, for tonight?
Thank you.
All right, I believe we need a, no, do we need a motion to accept the adopted agenda?
I make a motion to accept the adopted agenda.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion is carried. All right, that being said, we will take item number seventeen. We'll go next. It'll be public comment for early citizen input on fiscal year 2024 and 2025 budget. Bear in mind, the next item up will be general public comment, so if there's something outside of the budget that you want to comment on, we'll have time for that as well. So, if anyone has signed up for public comment for, in regards to the 2024 budget, now would be your time. You come up to the podium, you'll get three minutes. And I'll throw a little flag in the air. When we're at our three minutes, you don't want to stop mid-sentence, but at that time, finish our thoughts so that everybody else has time to speak as well. So, with that, I'll ask for our public, excuse me, our first public speaker in regards to budget.
Sherri King.
Oh, there's an on-off switch. Make sure it's tiny at the bottom. Hold it up close there for us. Keep going.
Hi.
Here we go.
Hi, I'm Sherri King, 204 Live Oak Street. I want to talk to you about the budget next year. I've been listening for three years of what we're going to do with the rec center. I would like you to put in a capital improvement plan for that building next year, because I'm tired of hearing, "We're talking about it, we're talking about it, we're going to resurface it, we're doing the best we can." Make it a priority, next year's budget. Your town wants it, your residents want it. I see all of the town people go over there and use equipment that doesn't work. Even your tourists use it. Ask everybody who's playing pickleball out there where they're from, New York, Georgia, Massachusetts the other day. Put that, please, in your budget as a priority, a capital, not something to put a Band-Aid on it. Make it proud, make it right. Find the money, figure it out. That's your job. But for years, we've been listening to you all say, "Well, we don't have the money," or "We are thinking about it," or "We're going to Band-Aid this," or whatever. Painting a bathroom, replacing toilets is not going to fix that rotten equipment in gym. Take the time for your residents, your tourists, please. That's what I ask of you for next year's budget. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Lori Yehuna.
Am I on?
You are.
I am.
You sure are.
It's good to see all your faces. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I have two comments about the budget at this time. Oh, I'm Lori Yehuna, 320 Lob Lally Street. The gym floor, you knew I was going to talk about that. I am super excited to see real conversation about replacing the flooring and also to see discussion about the possibility of indoor pickleball. Well, I have discovered that the town of Wilson is now building an indoor pickleball facility suitable for tournaments, funded 100% with occupancy tax dollars. This is exciting news for me, and I hope it is for you. And I hope that the board will look into finding ways to get some funding from the Tourism Authority if we can upgrade our facility to the point where we could host indoor pickleball as a tourist attraction. I further suggest that we cast an even larger vision, and I think this piggybacks on what Sherri said, maybe a new gymnasium building, one with a proper foundation that would allow for the state-of-the-art, multipurpose flooring that we actually need to accommodate the multipurpose uses of our community center. I would rather be confident that we're making the best investment possible in order to make our community center the beautiful attraction for visitors and residents that we really need and we obviously deserve. Number two, the daffodil project. I personally have become more educated about the importance of native plants here in Emerald Isle, thanks to Carol Peoples and the Native Plant Society. However, I'm horrified to learn that almost every plant and tree that I have used at my own home in the past nine years is not only non-native, but in several cases, they are invasive plants, which means that these plants ultimately erode the delicate ecosystem of our island. Now that I know better, I am choosing to do better. And so, in that same vein, I would recommend that we steer this project from a daffodil project into a native plant beautification project and create the opportunity to educate the public, other homeowners like myself, and we have the opportunity to be at the forefront of a very worthwhile endeavor, ultimately protecting and preserving our barrier island and its birds, bees, and butterflies. Isn't that what you said? And lastly, this is not a budget item, but I don't want to get back up here. I would ask that you please appoint Tony Browder to fill the planning board vacancy. I perceive he is the highest qualified candidate for that position. As a civil engineer, his experience in ordinances and building projects, residential and commercial, make him the ideal candidate for this position. Thank you.
Denise Bosch.
Hi, I'm Denise Bosch. I live off Coast Guard Road. I've been a resident here for, permanent resident for seven years now, and I'm here to talk about salaries. Over the last three years, our salaries have increased 22.67%. Our current budget approved a 6% cost of living across the board, and last year was a 7.8%, which is a total of 13.8% over two years. But I don't think the residents realize that the COLA increases are just a piece of the increases that were received by the employees. On top of the COLA, there were merit increases, competitive salary adjustments, and of course, promotions. Over the last two years, many salaries actually increased well over 13.8%. Of course, when salaries increase, retirement benefits also increased as reflected in our budget. But that's still not all. On top of salary increases over the last few years, the board has approved longevity bonuses for every full-time employee. Bonuses range from $50 for service under one year, 100 for one to two years, 1% of your salary for two years, 2% for two to five years, 3% for five to 10 years, 4% for 10 to 15 years, and 5% for 20-plus years of service. The current budget reflects a total of close to $78,000 for this bonus. I hope the Commissioners will take a closer look at the salaries, possibly reduce or eliminate the COLA increase, cap the merit and competitive salary adjustments, and possibly redirect that longevity bonus to a much-needed gym floor for the over 700-plus members, and to be also, to utilize that for current events, future events, possibly pickleball, or even meetings that could be held in our own facility rather than renting the Islander. Thank you.
Ronnie Watson.
Well, yeah, I'm Ronnie Watson. I hate to say this, but I'm the oldest permanent resident living on Emerald Isle, but I guess I'm proud to say that. And I thought, when my daddy brought me here, I thought he was crazy. He wanted ten people living here, but not trying to tell you my family history, but my daughter Tammy is the first native-born child on Emerald Isle. And the reason I'm saying that, you know, I'm really concerned about what's going on. And, you know, I don't have to be up here, but I'm here because I care. You know, we're losing the small-town effect, in my opinion. We don't need to be Myrtle Beach, we don't need to be Wilmington, we don't need to be Rysel Beach, we need to be Emerald Isle. We're 6.1 square miles, we're not going to grow any bigger, but, you know, let's keep that small-town effect. That was what the new board was electing on. But also, you know, I've talked to many, many revs that's come to see me. And, you know, they're concerned about coming to the town meeting, watching videos. And, you know, that seems like that's a waste of money. And also, you know, it takes money, it costs money to make a video. And you don't do it in just one take. You have to take two or three takes. And it takes the town personnel that should be doing their jobs away from what they're supposed to be doing, instead of making a video. And I think the department heads should come to the meetings, as we do, get behind the podium, make their statements, as we do, so y'all can ask questions if you need to. And something else, you know, you Commissioners have a real important job. You know, you were elected to do something, you really need to take a closer look at what's being done. And like I say, you can't, when you have the board, the directors here, you can't ask them questions, you can't ask them on that TV monitor. So, I suggest that, what most other towns are doing, they're coming here, they have the department heads come to their meetings, and they're asked questions by the Board of Commissioners. Several months ago, a friend of mine was in here, we were sitting in the audience, and we watched 41 minutes of videos. And I think that's really uncalled for. Me being a businessman, I'm concerned about the waste of money. You know, and I'm worried about also the number of vehicles that we've got. I'm looking at the town streets, they're all to pieces. A lot of the things on the tennis courts need to be replaced. But also, I agree with what has been said about the gymnasium. How many of you have walked in that gym lately, except for Commissioner Wooton? Look at the floor. I mean, it's terrible. And here, that building, it was built in 1991, it's 33 years old, and we need doing some repairs on it. And, you know, also, I'm trying to read my notes here, I've got so many of them, but the gym also should... What is that?
Just a reminder, sir.
Do I have 10 more minutes? Okay. But also, the gym should be first-class. That's where, instead of having meetings at the Islander, why in the world don't we have them here? We got the facilities, we just got to fix them up and make use of them. Because, you know, I think everybody will agree that we need to fix that gym, we need to spend some money on it, instead of wasting money on making videos. But last, we just don't need to waste money like the federal government. I mean, this is our tax dollars, and you're spending our tax dollars. So, be conservative and don't do the wasteful spending as you need to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Yes, ma'am.
Now, we're moving on to public comment.
All right, next up will be general public comment. That'd be in relation to anything, so we'll start with our first public speaker.
Bonnie Schroeder.
Thank you. My name is Bonnie Schroeder. I'm a full-time resident for more than 30 years. And my husband and I currently live at 101 Alex Court. We feel very blessed to enjoy, you know, God's creation in such a beautiful place as we live now. During the election, we, as voters, asked for...
Don't forget your mic, I'm sorry, I missed that.
More transparency in our local government. You didn't want that song to be so loud, but that's okay. Opportunities for open discussion in a less formal setting in these town meetings would be extremely, extremely productive. Many of us go to Coffee with a Cop, which is great. And so, hopefully, maybe we can institute coffee, or if you'd like to do cocktails, that would be okay too, for the Commissioners, because obviously, many of you work, and that time period would be much better, early evening or late afternoon. Obviously, these discussions are something that would be beneficial to both of us in terms of getting information back and forth and sharing different thoughts and different ideas. I look forward to seeing when you're going to schedule those, because that would be great. Thank you so much. Oh, and one little thing, please think very strongly about Tanny Browder. It'd be great to have somebody so well-qualified to be a part of us. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Yes, ma'am.
Sherri King.
Hello, again. Hi, again. Okay, so, public speaking. First, I guess I'll follow them up with, Tanny Browder is probably a great choice, if you all want my opinion on that. And it has to go back to when he was on the golf cart committee, and they deemed them unsafe. I thought it was great of him to go there on his own, because he couldn't get paid, because we need to hire an engineer, because, you know, gray water. And he deemed them safe, because I was concerned about the 18 people hanging out on the bridge. So, to me, when you have someone in your town that does something to make sure that people are safe, and he's talented and qualified, why not? He's the greatest guy. But yesterday, I went to the meeting for hospitality, and I'm in hospitality, I've been hospitality for 20 years. And only, you know, it was different for me. I've gone to so many hospitality meetings, it was very different. It was more like a town meeting, and then the Carteret County Tourism spoke. But in that, I heard about a lot of great things. I heard a lot of money we made. I heard that we made $132,000 off cars we sold. I heard we made almost the same amount of money on equipment we sold. I heard that 1,485 golf carts are registered. I saw that 3,377 driving permits were given out. I heard that Park and Rec had 18,000 visitors, and if they all paid $10, that's a lot of money, and 707 residents, okay? We also get $354,000 from our parking, was what it says. I don't know where you put that money, but I spent three weeks on the phone trying to get fireworks back here on July 4th. Matt and I had a discussion yesterday. I said, "Well, I could get, I could absolutely get a barge." I'm from a place with the Atlantic Wells Ocean, Cape Cod. And Matt said that he had it all set up, he even had the pyrotecs, and y'all vetoed it, because it was going to be about 100 grand. We're a small town. Other towns put us to shame with their celebration of America, their celebration of their towns, their celebrations of New Years, and bringing in the New Year. I'm asking you again, do something. We, we, we don't even, the Christmas decorations, we're out, going to raise money, I'm going to join the fund. I'm going to put my money where my mouth is and go help and go door-to-door and ask people for money. For a town that, when you tell them you live here, they say, "Oh, it must be so nice, what a wonderful town, full of rich people." I'm like, "It's not." And ride down Cedar Point at Christmas time. It was embarrassing to us, what we looked like. We're way better than that, way better. I think you're all wonderful, you all work hard. Matt works super-hard, because everybody comes at him, I get that. Your newly officials, I think, take the time, I know my times run out, take the time to really think about what other people come to our town and think about us. We have a beautiful beach, but it ends there. 100 grand for fireworks? I don't want to hear how busy we're going to be. We're busy anyways. Add something to it, make it worthwhile. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Michael Westbrook.
Michael Westbrook, there you go.
Michael Westbrook, 125 Deerhorn Drive. I was here in October and expressed a sincere concern about speeders. I did see in the publication that, you know, that we slow down, do this, do that, and that's all well and fine, but I am a road jogger and a walker, and I see the traffic on Coast Guard Road, and I see the traffic on Deerhorn Drive, and it's not going anywhere near the speed limit. I have seen cars, I know, go by police officers sitting on Coast Guard Road where it's 25, going at least 50, because I am only about five or six feet from the car. So, there may be some kind of anomaly that I'm not aware of, but if you can't prove to me that what I'm seeing is real, I want to see the data you're looking at. Because traffic's going too fast, it's going way too fast. When I was here in October, I recommended that you take the speed limits on Deerhorn Drive and all of the other subdivisions down there and lower it to 21, and enforce the speeders. It means it's just, it's almost like it's no big deal. It's like, you drive whatever speed you want to, there is no qualm, there is no penalty for it. And I'll say, like I've said here, I've been here almost five years, and I have yet to see one car, now, I'm not saying it didn't happen, I'm saying I have not seen one patrol car stop somebody from speeding that I saw. It's just, it just goes rampant. So, if somebody can prove to me that I'm wrong, I'd like to see the data of where you recorded it, because I don't think it exists, not on Coast Guard Road and not on Deerhorn Drive. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Philip Parks.
Philip Parks. Good evening, sir. I'm Phil Parks, lived here about two and a half years. Actually, I thought I was signing the sheet saying I was at the meeting, so I really don't have anything to say. But since I've got the microphone, I want to thank all of you for serving our community and all of you for taking the time out of your night to come and be a part of it.
Mary Ann Waldrop.
Good evening, ma'am.
I'm Mary Ann Waldrop. I live at 103 Sandcastle Drive, and it's a pleasure to be here. Thank you, leadership of Emerald Isle. I wanted to introduce myself. I know many of you, but I am running currently unopposed for District Four for County Commissioner here in Carteret County. That is the property between Atlantic Beach, some of Moorhead City that doesn't have many voters, some of Cape Carteret, which has a lot of very valuable voters, but not a whole lot throughout the town, and all of Cedar Point. I am a resident of Emerald Isle. I have lived here since 1980, off and on. I joined the Marine Corps in 1983, or, joined the Marine Corps in 1987 after an NROTC scholarship at the University of North Carolina. I've been of service all my life, but this is the first time I've ever ventured into elected service. So, I am using this very valuable nine months. Self-disclosure, never been married, no children. So, I don't know what nine months of a pregnancy looks like, but I am going to experience it in my political life right now by learning everything I need to learn to be the best servant of our county. I have no special interest, I don't have a real estate agent license, I am not a developer, but I ask good questions. I have a master's in computer science and a PhD in leadership. That I think, after 24 years of me in the Marine Corps, I bring a lot to this county, and I want to ask good questions. I have no life, so I have plenty of opportunity to go to each and every one of the town meetings. So, I will end it here, open to talk to anybody, anytime. I have cards with me. I am here to learn, I am here to understand the issues. I'm not here to give you everything you've asked for or everything you think you need to ask for, but I'm here to give you answers of why I voted the way I do. So, I'm looking forward to serving this area. I've lived here off and on, stationed in the Marine Corps twice at Camp Lejeune, lived both times on Emerald Isle, all on Coast Guard Road or on Reed Drive, and I'm grateful to be back. I've been a permanent resident here since October of 2019, and I get out and about. If you haven't seen me, you're probably not at eating establishments or bars, or listening to music, quite frankly, because I love to follow the music. So, I'm an open book at this point, would love to engage. Mary Ann Waldrop, you just do a search on the Internet, and you can find me. Thank you, thank you.
Carol Peoples.
I think this is still on. I'm Carol Peoples, I live at 401 Hickory Street. I'm one of the leaders of the Central Coastal Plain Chapter of the North Carolina Native Plant Society and a master gardener here in Carteret County. I'd like to first speak about the Highway 58 beautification plan. And this is an email I actually wrote to you all. Well, not all of you, because you weren't all Commissioners at that point, back in the fall when this was first discussed, when we purchased, I think, about $4,000 for 6,700 daffodil bulbs to be planted on Highway 58. So, I'd just like to read this. "I request that any decision regarding choice of plants, design, installation be postponed until there is time to look into utilization of variety of native plants and grasses which support pollinators and other insects, rather than daffodils, which are native to northern Africa, Europe, Afghanistan, China, and Japan, and provide minimal to no support to the ecosystem. They also have a limited bloom time, about three to weeks, three, four weeks, and then they don't look that good the rest of the year. So, beyond support for pollinators and other insects, which are vital to the survival of birds and other wildlife, native plants have other benefits. They're beautiful, they provide a sense of place. We've had a real homogenization of our landscapes occurring due to the almost-exclusive use of non-native species like crepe myrtles, privet, palms, oleanders in our residential and municipal spaces. I would really love for Emerald Isle to stand out and be beautiful, because we look like Emerald Isle and not like every other town. Plants native to our area are more likely to establish quickly and will naturally be hardy and healthy. They require much less watering, fertilizer, and pesticides. They can prevent water runoff and improve air quality. Many have extensive root systems. They can help decrease pollution, because they eliminate the need for mowers and other equipment." Some options, just off the top of my head this afternoon, might be the blanket flower. There is a cultivar called Arizona sun. We planted some at the Beaufort Inlet Inn. She had us put in a native garden. They were blooming in May when we installed them. They bloomed solidly to frost, and then there's still some blooms today. So, that would be a wonderful option. There's dotted horsemen, there's seaside goldenrod, beautiful grasses like purple love grass, pink mullein grass, little blue stem. So, I just ask that you, instead of just moving forward with more daffodils, as you all discussed at your retreat, I think 6,000 more dollars. all discussed at your retreat, I think 6,000 more dollars for daffodil bulbs, I'd really like for us to look into other options that will make Emerald Isle look like Emerald Isle and not anyplace else. And then just, in addition, I'd like to voice my support for Mr. Browder. He has four decades of civil and structural engineering. He has, he's a man of integrity. I think the residents trust him. And he's applied before, I think, two or three times and has never been selected, and I, I find that really hard to understand because he's so ultimately qualified. And that's all. And if anybody has any questions about native plants, I'll be around after the meeting.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Jean and Denise Heath.
Say it again.
Jean and Denise Heath.
Okay. Maybe another accidental sign in. All right. You know what, can I say hi?
Jeff Ward.
I just want to make this part of a public record. It may not interest all of you or even, even if it's just a few, but on June the 11th, 2013, at a Board of Commissioners meeting, the board voted on a resolution establishing a sunset provision on a one-cent property tax increase with the intent that this increase would remain in effect for 10 years only. This temporary one-cent property tax increase was earmarked for funding to complete the bike path to stormwater projects and parks and rec improvements. The 2013 resolution states the one-cent property tax increase was to be retired or eliminated by 2023 or before. Over a year ago, a gentleman named John Wooton raised serious questions about this at a Board of Commissioners meetings, but we've heard nothing about it since then. Interesting enough, it turns out that John Wooton and Floyd Messer were both commissioners in 2013 and voted to approve and honor the sunset provision with the intent the one-cent property tax increase would be temporary and be eliminated once the bike path and other projects were completed. My question is, did the previous Board of Commissioners, which still included Mr. Messer and the leadership within town government, did they honor this resolution? Was the one-cent property tax increase retired after 10 years as promised? If not, why not? Was there a public discussion or a public forum held to get resident input prior to making this temporary one-cent property tax increase a permanent one? It would be interesting to find out. I hope the new board will look into this. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. All right. No more? All right. We will move on to...
Mayor?
Yes?
I was late. Can I just go up and say something? I'd have to get on.
Yeah, hey, Billy. Yes, sir, please. And if we missed anyone or if you missed the sign-up sheet, I know it's crowded, but once Mr. Farrington's done, just throw your hand up in the air, we'll make sure you get your chance to.
My name's Billy Farrington. I'm at 8108 Sound Drive, and I want to congratulate the new commissioners. All you guys are doing a great job, and mayor. And I just want to ask the board if they would put two things back on the agenda for next month. The town last January changed the, not the zoning, but the setbacks on the oceanfront lots in Emerald Isle, even if the lots were platted before 1977. They went from a 10-foot setback to a 15-foot setback. As builders, I should have said that, I'm a builder, I am a builder, represent about 25 builders in Emerald Isle, Cape Carteret, but we think that this is not right to take people's property rights. It's really a land grab. So we would like to get that put back on the agenda for the commissioners, the new board, to vote on that and see if we can get change that, change back to 10-foot. Next thing on the agenda I would like to add for next month, if you could, is the engineered stormwater plan that they put on all the builders for every house that you build in Emerald Isle now. It's been slowing us down about two or three months on getting permits, and it's not needed. I have a study that Emerald Isle did in 2013, and it's by Michael S. Cisco. It's about 80, 80-some pages long, but it's a study that they did along the Coast Guard Corridor, Reed Drive, Coast Guard Corridors. They went in there and they put in a bunch of ground wells to measure the stormwater. And what they found in that study was, we're not having trouble with the stormwater, we're having trouble with the water table. The water table, when we have storms, the water table's only like a foot and a half underground. So if we have 12 inches, 16 inches of rain in the wintertime, the water table comes out of the ground in that whole area, Coast Guard Road, all the way down to Land's End and the town. What I feel is the town has been using the builders, saying that the builders have been causing all this stormwater problems. Well, we haven't been causing the stormwater problems. This is natural. It's been doing it for years and years and years. The stormwater, we have rains, the water table comes out of the ground, everything floods around those areas. If we have a hurricane, we have 22, 24 inches of rain, everything comes right out of the ground. It's not anything to do with stormwater. So we would like to get this engineered stormwater plan taken back out of the ordinance, because it's wasting a bunch of our time, it's wasting a bunch of money, and we don't think that is needed. And if you, when you read the study, I have the, some of the website, I would like, really, everybody in Emerald Isle needs to read this study. I don't know why the town hasn't put it out to the people in Emerald Isle. It was done in 2013. It's done by a bunch of doctors, engineers from ECU, and they explain everything that we should be doing in Emerald Isle, and it doesn't say one thing about engineered stormwater plans for individual homes. Nothing in there about that. It has a place in there for best management practices, and what they want to do, they want us to keep all the stormwater on top of the ground. They don't want us to put the stormwater in the ground, because when we put the stormwater in the ground, it competes with the water table, then the water table was higher than it should be. So they say in the study, if you can put the stormwater and swells and things on the sand dunes, it would help Emerald Isle a lot better than putting it in the ground. But if everybody could read the study, it's, if you go in there assessing the shallow groundwater system, potential factor generating stormwater runoff in North Carolina, Barrier Island, ECU, I give this to the mayor, and you may be putting it on your website, but I think everybody needs to read this, and then they would understand what's going on with the island. It's been flooding for a long time. That is my time up. I have one other thing to say. I really would like the town board to look into the planning department. In the last year, we've had three or four planning department heads, and I think we've really lost some really good people, and I think they've been managed, over-managed, or something is going on, and this, this engineered stormwater plan has added so much more work to their workload already, they can't handle it. So we've had three or four leave in the last year. That's not good. That's not good for a town. They were really good people, and I don't understand what's going on. So if you can check into that, I'd really appreciate it.
Thank you, bud.
Mr. Mayor?
Hey, Jim. Yes, sir.
These speaks, I gotta speak now, all right? Just want to, I, I wouldn't hear last month, but just want...
Your mic's off, sir.
I just want to welcome the new board, and obviously you've got a room full of people, but it sounds like a lot of these people in the room really care about Emerald Isle, and they're, they're here for all the excitement of the great things that you're going to do for us, and we appreciate all you're doing and how you stepped up and ran for office. It's a big deal. I also want to let you know, I'm your Carteret County Commissioner for the next 11 months, and hopefully this Mary Ann Waldrop will be the next commissioner, commissioner-elect. Congratulations. And I just want to, just want to let you know that if you need anything from the county, we'll be glad to help you in any way that we can. So please ask for help if you need anything. Emerald Isle's done a great job for a long time, and it's not asked for any help. We've been part of some good partnerships and some things like the Islander Project. I'm not sure exactly what that was called. That ended up being a win-win situation for everybody, but please don't hesitate to call me if I could do anything for you. And I, I just want to back up what Billy said. It takes a lot to get up here and talk to you and ask you for these things, but we've been asking for them for several months. And I am willing, as a landscaper, to offer to help in any way to try to look at some solutions so that everybody in Emerald Isle realizes that you can do a lot to, to mitigate stormwater. I had a couple of conversations with Commissioner Brownlow about all the trees, and it ties into what the ladies were talking about earlier, finding trees that sop up the water, you know, but there is, we can start right here on the property at the gym. It'd be a great stormwater program. I think Mr. Brownlow's already talked about that and probably some of the other commissioners, but I'll, I'll be glad to help in any way to facilitate that, anything that I can do. So thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Jimmy. Miss anybody? All right. You're doing great.
I need Greg to sit eight minutes.
Already getting tired of just living on the wall. All right. Next up would be the Emerald Isle Fishing Tournament, check presentation to the EI Christmas Lighting Committee. Commissioner Taylor, I'll let you take it from here, sir.
Thanks.
Got a mic over here if you need it.
Okay. And let's show them up. I'm Mark Taylor, one of your commissioners. I think most of you know who I am, but if I could just get my team to come up, all my volunteers, anybody that we've got sponsors in here tonight that want to come up too that help with it, and then all the committees and stuff that came up too. And I'll tell you a little bit about the fishing tournament. We started about five years ago, the fishing tournament did, and we started it up with trying to raise scholarship funds for local high school kids and dredging, and that's kind of how it began. It's a one-day tournament. We do it in the late fall. This year is going to be the last week in September, and it's been a lot of fun. A lot of these people up here, all the volunteers, and they've helped out a lot, and we've had a lot of good, and we put a lot of kids through, into college. The scholarships are about $3,000 each. They last, we've been giving away six of them this year, again, six last year, six the year before, so we've done really good with that. A lot of the funds are sponsored through our auction that we do the night before, where folks like yourselves or businesses donate certain things to us, and then we auction them off, and all those funds go right back into the funds. Well, this year, we, we made a little extra money at our auction, which was a good thing, and we're still going to support the six scholarships like we did in the previous years. We also came up with a little extra money with the auction part of it. So as most of you heard earlier in the comments, that we're doing some new Christmas ornaments, and there's a committee up that retired Commissioner Finch is heading up here, and they're trying to get a funding match from the town. They're trying to raise roughly about $15,000, and then the town's going to match that to bring us all the way up to the money that we need to buy these Christmas ornaments that they priced out. Well, we ended up at the tournament raising about an extra $7,500, and we're trying to find places that we can put that money in, and we want to give it back to the people because this is the town that made it happen for us. So tonight, what I would like to do is take my group of people up here, all these people you see on the board up here, all our sponsors every year, they've came back every year, and this is our group. So when you're going around town, not only here, but anywhere through the whole county, support these guys, because these are the guys that help us get the fishing tournament going every time. So just remember who they are. But what I would like to do now is, well, before I give the check, one quick thing, too. If you have any local kids, or any of the high school kids that are in Carteret County or Swansboro High School, the scholarship's online now. You can go to the Emerald Isle website, and they can apply for the scholarship. Pretty much, it's, all the details and stuff are on there, but you can check it out, but it's six scholarships. So far, in the last four years, the tournament's given away $54,000 in scholarships, plus what we're going to give away this year on top of the 54,000. So I can't thank this group of people up here enough for what all they've done to make it happen. And like I said, we all do this on a Friday night, we have the auction, and then on a Saturday, we have a one-day fishing tournament. So if you like to fish, it's a great way, too. You go out and surf fish for $50, and we have a boating division, too. You can go out and boat with us, and the guy last year, I think he walked away because of all the funding, about $10,000 for first place. So it's, it's a good tournament, it's a lot of fun, and we have a lot of fun doing it. So we'd love your support. If you're out there and you'd like to support the tournament and get your name up there, your business, we'd love to have you on board. We're trying to grow every year and get a little bit bigger and a little bit better. But now let's get on to the more important thing, and this is the, one of the fun things that I, I get to do with being a commissioner, and I was lucky enough to be chosen to be part of the fishing tournament four or five years ago. And what I have here is Steve Finch's committee over there, it's the Christmas Lighting Committee, and we'd like to give our part of $7,500 from the fishing tournament, hand this over to Commissioner Finch and his group, and we'd like to say thank you, and we're looking very excited about making our town shine again, too, with all the Christmas ornaments that are going to be hopefully this year.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, yes, sir.
I'd like to say just thank you to Mayor Pro Tim Taylor and all these gentlemen and everyone that is part of this fishing tournament. They do an outstanding job. We formed a committee several months ago to revamp the Christmas lighting at Emerald Isle. We're going to completely redo it. It's going to look like a new town. We're going to put some Christmas spirit back at Emerald Isle for every man, woman, and child, and we sincerely appreciate it. It's a lot of hard work, but you know, it makes it all worthwhile when we see it this coming Christmas and the town is illuminated. Just to give you a rough idea, the street lighting on the main drag, which we call the downtown area, those poles will be wrapped in garland with bows on the top. There'll be new LED lighting down the entire beachfront, 58 all the way down. It's going to look like a brand-new Emerald Isle. We well deserve it. Our decorations are 20-some years old, and it's high time. You know, we've been looking at this for four or five years, and things kind of got put to one side, but you know, it was necessary to do so. But now the time has come, so we're moving forward, and I'm just so appreciative of all these individuals that have worked with me on the committee raising the funds. We set our goal at $30,000 to raise, and the town said with the thanks of the commissioners here that they would match us dollar for dollar. With this contribution, we are now halfway there. And again, fishing tournament, guys, thank you ever so much. You do a wonderful job. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you all. All right. All right. Congratulations to everybody, Steve and team on the Christmas lights, and Mark and crew with the fishing tournament. I've had the opportunity to volunteer, participate since its inception, and it's really great to see all the wonderful things it's doing for the town and for our local youth in the form of scholarships, thousands and thousands of dollars in scholarships to send these kids or help send these kids to school so that they can go learn about the water and our ecosystem, and hopefully return home and help us out more. So good job to everybody involved. It's, it's a heck of a process, and I appreciate you. Next item up would be, we don't have any proclamations tonight, would be our public announcements.
The Emerald Isle Public Announcements. On February 16th, the American Red Cross will hold a blood drive from 1:00 to 5:30 p.m. at the Emerald Isle Community Center. To schedule an appointment, please contact 1-800-RED-CROSS or visit www redcrossblood.org. On February 20th, join the Emerald Isle Police Department for the Police Educating the Public event. This month, Brooke Barnhill, Port Team Leader, will be speaking. This event is held in the Town Board Meeting Room. It begins at 10:00 a.m. and will not exceed one hour. The next Coffee with a Cop happens on February 22nd from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. On February 20th, join the Emerald Isle Police Department for the Police Educating the Public event. This month, Brooke Barnhill, Port Team Leader, will be speaking. This event is held in the Town Board Meeting Room. It begins at 10:00 a.m. and will not exceed one hour. The next Coffee with a Cop happens on February 22nd from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. Join your neighbors and the Emerald Isle Police Officers for coffee and conversation. The next Planning Board Meeting happens on February 26th at 6:00 p.m. On March 1st, you can begin applying for parking passes online. You will be able to buy parking passes in person on April 1st at the Emerald Isle Police Department. Emerald Isle taxpayers are eligible to receive two annual free parking permits for the Eastern Ocean Regional Access and Western Ocean Regional Access. The next Neighborhood Watch Meeting is on March 5th at 4:00 p.m., and the next Board of Commissioners Meeting takes place March 12th at 6:00 p.m. in the Town Board Room.
All right. Thank you very much. Next up, I'll invite Fire Chief Billy Mathiels up. We have a new, or not a new employee recognition, an employee recognition. Sorry about that, Luke.
Good evening, everybody. Good? All right. Good evening, community. I have the fortunate chance to introduce the newest full-time firefighter to Emerald Isle here, that is Luke Parks. He would be the reason why Mr. Parks signed in tonight to support his, his son and congratulate him in all of his efforts. I'm very proud to say I enjoy watching Luke grow. I'll tell a little bit about him. Comes to us from Elm City. He went to school at UNCW down in Wilmington. There, he fell in love with the beach and ocean. He found Wrightsville Beach Fire Department, who operates their own ocean rescue program. And two out of his four years down in Wrightsville Beach in Wilmington area, he worked for Wrightsville Beach Fire and Rescue in the Ocean Division. Comes to us, fell in love with the fire department, should I say. Went to school at Nash Community College to obtain his North Carolina firefighter one and two certification and his EMT. He had come to us in the summer of 2022. Shortly thereafter, in the fall, applied part-time with us. So he is a dual train, comes back in the summertime, hits the ocean when we need him on additional calls, but is filling out on a full-time role with the firehouse now. I look forward to seeing him continue to grow in his longevity here with Emerald Isle. I want to congratulate Luke. Good job. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Chief. Congratulations again, Luke. Okay, next item up would be the Consent Agenda. Commissioner Wood, you had a question or a comment regarding the consent agenda?
Yeah, I had a question that I know the minutes from the closed session were made available. I didn't get a chance to review those, so.
The way that I would handle that is, the only thing that should be on the consent agenda is approval of the closed session minutes. There shouldn't be any discussion in an open session, so you could move that vote to the closed session for later on.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, so we need to, how do we need to officially do that? Do we need to make a motion to move the closed session minutes to the closed session?
Yes, sir, and remove them from the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion to remove item B from the consent agenda and move it to the closed session agenda.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motions carried. All right. I also need a motion to adopt the amended consent agenda, correct?
Yes, sir.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to adopt the amended consent agenda.
All right, motions on the floor. All, or excuse me, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motions carried. All right, new business, we have a presentation by VC3. Jim Moore, are you with us there?
Hello?
Just a, just a preface, this is our town's IT vendor, VC3, and Jim's here to give a presentation explaining the services they provide. For those that don't know, I know VC3 doesn't give you a lot of info. Sorry. What was yours, sir?
Yes, thank you for having me, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Jim Moore. I'm your, my role with VC3 is I'm a strategic advisor, essentially your IT director role, where I help, if the city has any initiatives, I help them guide towards the best solution. VC3, just as a general overview, has been in business 26-plus years. It specializes in providing IT services for municipalities specifically. I have over 20 years of experience working with municipalities. So I do have a quick video that kind of gives you a, 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 thank you. You can give me the flag too.
Don't worry about it, sir, I'm sorry.
So this is a lot of how we do our business, so I, our marketing team came up with it, so I, I think it's a good brief video.
Meet Daniel. Daniel is the city manager of Anytown. Daniel wants to focus on making Anytown an even better place to live and work, but is constantly distracted by cybersecurity threats and technology challenges. He goes to bed every night hoping his municipality isn't the next big news headline. If only the challenges of IT and cybersecurity could just be handled. He shares his struggles over coffee with his friend Alex, the city manager of Nearby Town. Alex says she used to struggle with the same worries, but now she sleeps soundly. Alex shares that her municipality partners with VC3. They take care of her municipality's technology and cybersecurity needs. They even automate old manual processes. Nearby Town gets the support they need, like 24/7 IT support, data backup and disaster recovery, cybersecurity services, and proactive maintenance. They were referred to Alex by another local municipality, one of the more than 1,100 they work with and her state league. Alex, who always has a full list of to-dos, loved how easy VC3 made it. They came in with a very clear and organized process, quickly onboarding Nearby Town and addressing their needs. Best of all, VC3 is local, and Alex knows Nearby Town is getting the best bang for their buck. Within days of signing up with VC3, Daniel rests easy knowing his municipality is being updated with current technology, supported by municipal-trained and CEGIS-fedded professionals, and protected against cyber threats. Now Anytown will only be in the headlines for good news.
Okay, so that's just a quick spiel on, you know, kind of the overview of, of services that VC3 provides. We do get a lot of references from other cities who use our services. And it, it does say we're local. Our, actually, we have actual engineer who services Emerald Isle, who actually is in Nearby Town, Morhead City. So, but he does live there. He's been a resident there for over five years now. So you do have a local, we do have a local presence here. I do have a presentation as well, just to give you some highlights of specifically what the city has.
I have a clicker up here. Is this the one he's looking for?
Jim, you can point it at any screen. It bounces back to the computer. What's that? Point it at any screen. Okay. Thank you. So as the city's strategic advisor, I can tell you that the city is exactly where I would advise the city to be for, for multiple reasons, but specifically because you're in hurricane zone and tornado zone, flooding zone. A lot of things that come into interfere with your IT processes. So this, this again is just back of our history of what we provide. You know, we make it personal. I won't read it exactly, but again, we've got a 96% customer satisfaction. We make it easy. We, we take over your IT. We, we make it so IT just works. Again, there, we have our, our points there. We have an average retention of 11 years. Emerald Isle is going on seven years, just as a reference. We're, we're actually growing. It, it says there that we, we get it right. We've got 450-plus employees. We actually have 600-plus employees now, so this was, this wasn't updated since then. But again, we, we help, we help the IT world just work for the city and not have the city worry about where they are. Again, the, the video you saw is more of an onboarding video. Again, the city's been a longtime partner with VC3, so we're well into this process. But typically, what we do for cities is we come in and we solve, we identify all the issues the city might have, so we assess them, we, we recommend the improvements that need to be made, and then we help manage them, and then we continue to do the continuous improvement. So that is, that is the process we have, and again, Emerald Isle is, is well on that Again, from a IT services, we monitor your systems, we respond to incidents that are reported to us and/or incidences we pick up on that are monitored, and we're proactive. So we will come to, you know, we'll come out to staff and, and solve the issues as we see them happening, not necessarily just respond to them as they happen. The city has, and again, this is where VC3 and Emerald Isle are a perfect fit. They have our cloud performance package, which is formerly known as VOA, which is the virtual office advantage. Essentially what it is, you have a completely hosted environment. So you have, on the city side, you have no servers over in City Hall. So you are literally in a spot where, you know, I don't want to speak too carefully about, but if you, if something were significant were to happen and you no longer had a town hall, business would continue. You could literally go to anywhere where you have an internet access, access all your systems from a financial, to keep the city running. The same is true of your phone system. You have our phone system, which is also completely cloud-hosted. And again, for your citizens, and kudos on the participation here, by the way, that's actually impressive. But the, you know, so citizens will still be able to call the city, still be able to get someone, get, get their information, even if the building's no longer existed. And you have that as of today. So that, again, that is a result of our process to assess and improve and continue to manage and, and continue on. And again, as, as your services are provided here, everything is cloud-hosted, so you do have internal access to your systems. You do have, if you're, this was especially important in COVID world, if you had something where people couldn't go to work anymore, they could go to their personal computers and still securely access the city's resources and continue to do business. So that's really all the presentation I had. I, I didn't actually know the format of this, but I, I wanted to give you guys a kind of an overview, especially for the new commissioners. And if you have any questions, I'll be welcome to address them.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions from the board? There's no formal action on this, but a good opportunity for asking questions in open, open forum here. So I'll leave it to the board if they have any questions for Mr. Moore.
One question, I just want to say today, this morning, I was logging in and had a, as most of you probably know, with a password issue, and I was just going to compliment your team. I called up in a matter of a few minutes. You got the password reset, so it was, it was nice. So it's, it's nice that I could reach out to y'all and you were right there to fix it. So whoever was helping me, I don't remember the guy's name, but he did a good job, so. Yeah, thanks.
Where's your help desk located?
The, well, we have two help desks. We have a, a national help desk, which is out in South Carolina. So when you call the VC3 line, you hit that desk, and they do the, they do the immediate triage. So if it's something that is going to be more than resetting a password, they will send it, send it to our North Carolina team, which is in Raleigh.
Okay.
We've got 25 people in Raleigh and 15 people on that first-call response team.
Just out of curiosity, what's the biggest city in your portfolio?
Biggest city we have is Valdosta, which I think is a little bit of a province of Georgia, and they are a little over 500 employees, I believe.
Thanks.
Thanks, sir.
And we do have 41 cities in North Carolina. We've got 1,100 clients overall, and we are national now, coast-to-coast and all of here, support staff are here in the state and mostly in North Carolina.
Cool.
What's the smallest community that you serve and, and what do you, what services do you offer a small town?
So we have a range of services, and again, given the scenario, you have our highest level of service, but we have a kind of a sliding scale. We have clients that literally have two computers. And again, we support that computer, we provide the security tools for that computer. The, the applications are installed on that computer, so again, if something happens to that specific computer, we, we, yeah, we, we have a broad range. One of the acquisitions we did recently was actually four of the smaller clients, so we brought them on so we could cover the larger scale. We, we have clients, cities who are literally two computers. And we can provide, so, and we actually integrate a hybrid environment too. So we do have clients who have an IT staff, and in a lot of our cases, we are the IT staff, but we can.
And I know in here, we have, we're like a geographically challenged community, you know, because we're very linear in nature. Unlike the other towns that, that can radiate like a spoke out and offer services like that. And, and staff would have to go maybe from one in the town to the other 11 miles or so to, to do, look at things. But I think, I went on your site, and I did a little exploring, read some of your white papers and some of your other reports, and there was an interesting tool on there too that Matt had brought up at, at our retreat about click and see and report it for the, you know, the, the new age is that the, we are becoming a digital society, and it makes it much more convenient for a citizen to take that mobile phone that almost everyone has with them all the time, see something in town, take a picture of it, click and send it to the town, to report it that way. Could you elaborate on that application?
Well, we can customize that kind of an application. There are actually third parties that provide that now. So we can either partner with the city with that application, or we can develop one. We have a full app development team that could act as a great one specifically for the, for the town. But there are several options, pointing, you know, where they, exactly where you can get a GPS location as you see something broken that needs to be fixed. But those are all, they're, they're existing products. And that's, that's where we also come in, is we help vendor management, so we can help coordinate with that company to do the interaction with Emerald Isle, so it's not taking a math time, so it's not looking at Greg's side. That's what we.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Leish?
No questions.
All right. Thank you again for coming, sir. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, next item up, Commissioner Brownlow would like to speak regarding the resolution opposing homeowner insurance rate increase.
Thank you, Mayor. I know this was a big hit with, with all the residents in town, and, and what I understand, the Insurance Commissioner Causey got over, was it 25,000 letters and emails and phone calls opposing that coastal flood or coastal insurance rate hike. And, and I know many of you did respond to that. The, the town board, we asked the town manager to submit a letter on our behalf on that. And even though this resolution is, could be after the fact, I think it's still good to go on record as opposing this insurance rate hike because it's not ending there. It now goes to the courts. And so I think it's still good for us to report this and, and be on the record as opposing the rate hike. So we have drafted a resolution opposing the proposed increase on homeowners' insurance rates by the North Carolina Rate Bureau. Do we read this, or?
If we're going to propose adopting it, or, Jeff, we're going to?
No need to read it.
No need to read it? Okay. Need a motion to adopt the resolution then? Okay.
Then I'd like to put out a, a motion that we adopt the resolution for the record and opposing the proposed increase rate on homeowners' insurance in the coastal area.
All right, motion on the floor to adopt the resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion's carried. Thank you, sir. All right, next up, we have a presentation from Bog Banks Water. We have Seola Hill representing Bog Banks Water Company. Welcome, sir.
Good evening. Again, my name is Seola Hill. I'm the Executive Director for Bog Banks Water Corporation. I've met most of you and worked a few of you in the past through the town. I grew up in Swansboro, spent my summers here on Emerald Isle every chance I could. I've been with the water company for about 15 years now, and my first job was actually as a meter reader, so I've been from the top to the bottom, from the bottom to the top, I should say. So basically who we are, we're a nonprofit, 501(c)(3) water, water provider for Emerald Isle, Indian Beach, and Solder Path. We have 6,400, 6,546 meters as of today. We add four to five a month at, at the rate we're doing right now. And basically, we have, the last few years, we've been looking for property to expand, mainly for future use. As everybody knows, there's a limited amount of property here in Emerald Isle, and what's here is going quick. And we can't just buy a property. We have to have a minimum of 200 by 200 to do anything, so that generally equates to at least three, between three and six properties, depending on how they're oriented. So we've located four lots, already zoned commercial. They are in the dogleg portion of Emerald Isle by Ocean Drive, just past Dollar General. Circle Pizza used to be there, and before that, there was another business, I'm not sure what it was, a long time ago. But it's zoned commercial. Problem is, they have residential restrictive covenants on it that do not allow commercial properties. is, they have residential restrictive covenants on it that do not allow commercial properties, anything besides homes to be built there. So that brings it to why we're here tonight. We have been in touch with our local North Carolina rep, Celeste Cairns, and she is willing to process a local bill through the North Carolina Legislature that will give us the condemnation authority over just restrictive covenants on just those four lots if we purchase them. So it's a very specific bill for a very specific thing. It does not give us condemnation for anything else. In order for her to process that bill, she needs the support of the local town, which is Emerald Isle. That's where the lots are located. So that is what we're here asking for tonight. Why we need the land, like I said, we need larger chunks of land. This equates to a slightly over 200 by 200 footprint. We have no immediate plans for the land, but we do know we will need more land in the future. So those covenants were placed in June of 1959. At some point later in time, the town zoned it commercial property. And that is, there's really the only option for us to move forward with this property is to condemn those covenants. There's just no real other option that would be successful. So the timeline is, the General Assembly is back in session mid-April. They need a month to write that bill, which is mid-March. So that's why we are here today. And the seller has been very gracious working with us. She wants to sell the property to us if we can get this cleared up. She wrote an email of support, which was forwarded to you all earlier this week. And basically, I'd like to just hit the high points of the resolution. I won't bore everybody with the legalese of it. Basically, it goes, we are Bog Banks Water Corporation that provides water to residents of the town of Emerald Isle and surrounding areas. In order to meet anticipated demand for future water, we need to expand the system's infrastructure, well sites, towers, treatment facilities, et cetera. Given the nature of the development of the town and the number of suitable sites for use, BBWC is severely limited, and finding those sites is also complicated by restrictive covenants that impose many properties which restrict their use to residential purposes. These four lots addresses are 3103 Emerald Drive, 3101 Emerald Drive, 3104 Ocean Drive, and 3106 Ocean Drive. BBWC has concerns for using lots for utility purposes in violation of residential use provisions in the restrictive covenants. And unlike municipalities that have the ability to condemn property, we do not. That is one of the downfalls to being a nonprofit corporation. So we are requesting that the North Carolina General Assembly approve a local bill which would grant the ability, if necessary, to condemn those restrictive covenants on those four lots only. And then the last paragraph is more or less saying you all support us in the resolution. See, that's what we're here for. I'm trying to keep it short and kind of to the point. And I understand you probably will not vote on this tonight, but we would ask for you to vote on this at the next meeting.
Thank you, sir.
And if y'all have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer anything I can.
I'm sure the board does have some questions. For everybody in the room, I know you gave the addresses, but can you, a visual map?
Yeah, are we able to pull that up on GIS? Yeah. So we see the lot there that's kind of got the blue circle around it, a blue square around it. It's these, 1, 2, 3, 4, these lots right here. And that's, as you can see, this is 205 this way, 185, and then 95. So it's, it takes a combination of the four to make the bare minimum of what we need for a site for anything. And you see the Dollar General parking lot there off to the left, give reference to where we're at.
Thank you, sir. Questions from the board?
What would be the purpose of the land once you obtain it? And you said you would just hold it for future use. What type of uses would you do with that?
It could be anything from building a new tower, a water treatment plant. We're in the process of building a water treatment plant, another reverse osmosis plant. We're trying to get the permitting for the discharge and everything right now. And that is planned to go at our office location right here across the street. If anything should happen and that is not fittable, then that could be a backup for that. It could be a well site, or we could just hold it for 40 years and, you know, use it for whatever we need in the future.
Any other questions from the commissioners?
I mean, do you see a need for it? I mean, like, is there a water shortage or anything that's, that's, we should be alarmed about or concerned about?
No, we don't have a water shortage here. We have saltwater intrusion issues on the western end of the island, which is what that RO plant down there was built and designed for. So far, they've been staying on that end of the island, and we haven't seen any signs of intrusion in the wells eastward. We do have distribution issues in the Indian Beach and Salter Path region, and that's mainly due to pipeline sizes. And we can accommodate smaller homes, but large developments, we don't have the ability to get the water that we do have there, if that makes sense. Plenty of water, just can't get it there. We're working on solutions for that as well, but that's a different area and different topic.
So this site could possibly subsidize water you'd be pumping out of the town?
It would be out of the, it would be out of the town, yes, but into our service area of Indian Beach and Pine Knoll Shores, potentially. We don't, we try not to look at it as water leaving the town for another town, because it's, to us, it's all one area. But, yeah, it's just, land's not getting any cheaper. If we wait 20 years from now and find that we need a parcel of land like this, it's going to cost tenfold what it costs now, which is going to cost everybody here more money in their monthly bills, which we don't want.
Well, you know, water's important to us. I mean, a big thing. Without water, we can't, we can't live. I mean, that's the way it works.
Most of our well sites are older sites on the eastern half of the island as well. They're still functioning fine, but, you know, over time, the gravel pack that is around the wells does clog up with calcium and things like that over time. You can clean it, but you can only do that so many times. And so I would say, you know, we will need more wells in, you know, not anywhere near now, but in 20, 30 years, some of our older wells will need to be replaced.
Yeah, this is, you're, you're coming to us tonight for future, for outlook. So you're trying to, you're trying to fix a problem that could be here in 15 or 20 years where water, like Commissioner Brownlow's talking about, water could be an issue if these saltwater intruded a couple of these wells, and now we're, now we're cut down 25, 30 percent. And you have, and you have nowhere to put a well in anymore, because there's no more land left.
Right. We're trying to plan for that with building the, the second RO plant as well, and top of giving everybody a better quality of water all year long. The RO will essentially be there for if that saltwater shows up. The problem with RO is you need roughly 25 percent more water than you currently have, because you have to send a waste stream back out to the sound.
Right. I have no more questions.
That's, you said that we would need 25 percent more water. Is, is, does anyone else, like, have water conservation management plans or something they can, to do? Because I, I think around here, when I was talking to Bubba, that a lot of the, a lot of people are using good, fresh, clean water to irrigate lawns with.
Correct.
And stuff. And there's a lot of manicured lawns in Emerald Isle.
Yes, that's been one of our focuses for the last few years, is we've stepped up from just asking for reductions in conservation. We've changed to tiered structural rates. We've changed from separate irrigation meters on new systems to separate irrigation meters or an altered building structure that mimics a separate meter for anybody that has an irrigation system. We have seen a, a decrease in usage this last year and the year before. And the demand, just based on that, is best we can tell anyways. But it's still not enough. You know, some of the larger homes, the rentals, they will use 20,000 to 50,000 gallons a month in summer irrigating the lawn. There's, there's nothing we can do.
Is that, is that one, like, one property?
Yes, one property. It's very few of those, but there are a lot, relatively speaking anyways.
I wholeheartedly support that we need ample supply of good, clean drinking water, available water for the community. We're nearing buildout ourselves. However, our summer population continues to grow. And the trend now is, something I'll be talking about later on during tonight, is that, that we are seeing, you know, more and more usage. You know, 13 bathrooms, 20, you know, 15 bedrooms.
Smaller houses get bigger.
Yes. And so, you know, we're going to be putting a lot of strain on that. So I definitely see a need for it and want to support the water company. And now, what I don't understand and educate me, because I'm, I need a lot of help on education. Could you help me with the condemnation of the restrictive covenants, why that's necessary?
So we can obviously buy the property outright, that, you know, whether we get a loan or just buy it, that's not a big deal. We can buy the property. The problem is using it in the future. There were commercial business there's, there in the past, but restrictive covenants are, you know, they're at the top of the list for rules. So if we were to build a treatment plant or a tower or anything there, the homeowners that are in those sections could technically sue us, and then we've got a multimillion dollar plant we can't use and have to tear down because of those, it's not a residential structure. So the condemnation is basically a catchall for us. We buy the property. We can develop it. If an issue comes up, we can condemn the covenants right then and there, and it's no longer an issue.
And this does take legislative action. I just, I'm just a little bit wary of opening up a possible trend, or, you know, is this going to happen again where we have to condemn something else, or it's not an eminent domain issue?
Correct. No. It's strictly for those covenants and only for those four lots. It's, if we were a municipality or even a sanitary district, then we could do the whole condemnation route if we chose to. We'd rather not. We'd rather go this route, purchase it for a fair price, and then just take out those covenants so it can be used for what it was used for in the past, a commercial lot.
Yeah, I don't understand how it's zoned commercial and its residential covenants on the property.
They were back from the 50s, so it was probably pretty easy to miss.
Okay. I think I'd like to ask the board to, let's table this for discussion and present it next month. But I'd also like to have a chance for public input on this. If it's a potential tower site, you know, that could impact people's property values. I'm not sure how that does in the area, or?
We have a tower at 7th Street, and the house right behind it, actually, the name of the house is what tower. As far as property values go, I can't speak to that.
I just know, I mean, if I own property, Jason, to it, I'd like to have a chance to at least comment and review a plan myself.
I understand.
And so I think it's, it's fair, because I want to be the voice of the people that put me into office up here to speak for them. I think at least that, we give them that opportunity to engage us and let us hear their thoughts. But I think it's good to, for the town to work with the water company and support you in every way we can, because we do need good, good, clean water for our citizens.
Agreed. Thank you for your time. Any other questions?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, Hill.
All right. Next item up would be discussion of.
Does that require any kind of action?
No, no formal action. You guys can discuss, potentially putting on the agenda for March public hearing, possibly before. Say again.
I would ask for clarity. So if you want to go ahead and table, that would be normally action to table it to March. But my question is, are you requesting a public hearing? And if so, would you like staff to advertise it as such?
Discussion on the board. Would you support a public hearing on it?
I got a pretty good overview from Bubba. I think it sounds like a good thing to do. I don't think there's many other places we could put it. So as a community, it's smart for us to put this bit of land aside for their use for this purpose, because as was mentioned, you know, the water's going to become more and more of a precious commodity. So I would, I'm always up for public comment on stuff, but I don't know that there's any options that are better than this one. And there's also a timing aspect to this, where we need to get it done so that the legislatures, legislators can write their legislation. So I'm happy to hear anything anybody that is nearby wants to say about it. But it sounds like a great idea to me and something that we need to do for our broader community.
Yeah, and that's, that's kind of the way I feel, too. I mean, this is a, this is a, not only for today, but this is for a future. And if they lose this opportunity, there might not be another opportunity for this to happen again. And it's the, I look at it as the greater need. And the greater need is all of Emerald Isle needs water. And if we, if we drop the ball in the land, it's sold, or something happens, it could be an issue. I see the need is stronger in this, this incident here.
I make a motion that we table this until next month and consider it at our March 12th meeting. At that time, public comments can be made, but I don't think it warrants a public hearing at this time.
All right. Not a sufficient motion?
Yes, sir.
All right. Motion's on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion's carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have residential parking on Ocean Drive. Mr. Brownlow?
Oh, I think.
No, we skipped.
Oh, did I? Oh! I'll be quick.
Rules, I'm sorry. I had to check marks. I thought that's where we were going. I apologize. Go ahead, Jay.
I'll be quick. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rules of procedure, instead of every month coming in here and saying, I'd like to modify the agenda, I thought we would adjust the underlying source for where the agenda gets started. And that's in our rules of procedure, particularly rule number six. Currently, the public comment is listed down at number eight of nine on the batting order of things to get covered in the agenda. And I propose and make a motion to move it up from number eight up to number two, which is discuss, discussion and revision of the proposed agenda, including consent agenda and adoption of an agenda. So the reason I say that is, when I go to work, if I go to a meeting with my boss, I want to hear what she has to say first, and then we have the rest of the meeting. And she might say something that changes the way I feel about what something later on in the meeting says. Since you all are our boss, it seems to me that we ought to hear from you up at the front of the meeting. And then everything else that we talk about and decide on subsequent to that will be informed by the input that you've taken the time to give us. So with that background being said, I make that motion to move the public comments from number eight up to number two in section, of rule number six of the rules of procedure. Is that good?
Yes, sir. And just as a reminder, Mr. Mayor, you need a vote of four of the five commissioners and be affirmative that motion is passed.
Okay. All right. The motion, I understand the motion is to formally change the rules of procedure, or per the rules of procedure, move the public comment back to the front of the meeting. Is that?
Yep.
Is that a clear enough motion that he's asked for?
Yes, sir. Number two, which would be immediately following the pledge of allegiance. Is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Motion's on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion's carried.
Right.
All right. Now we'll go to residential parking on Ocean Drive. Mr. Brownlow?
Okay.
Mr. Brownlow.
I brought this up during the retreat as a result of listening to you folks when I was out on the campaign trail. And, and again, I heard it from more than just one, one person. It was, it was, it seemed to be a trend among people that especially on the rental properties about parking on the right of way was obstructing traffic. It, sometimes it would, cars would have to wait in one line. This is according to what people were telling me. And, and so I started looking into it myself. Recently, went into the GIS database with a, is a history of aerial photography. And I went to a summer month and looked, and indeed, there's some, some congestion. And in fact, some properties even have paid parking for their rental cottages on the town right of way. And I was kind of surprised about that. I brought it up at the retreat, and I was informed that the, the parking on the right of way is strictly enforced. I guess, I don't know how that's done by warnings, tickets, citations. I don't know how that is. But I got looking at that and more, and as I've browsed around and looking at the GIS and seeing the current trends, not only here along our coast, but also what I was seeing when I was with Coastal Management all along North Carolina's entire oceanfront and. oceanfront and barrier island coastal areas, is that the, the older, smaller cottages that were like twelve, thirteen hundred square feet are being torn down and they're putting in rental properties. I'm not anti-rental property, because it helps keep our taxes low and it provides a thriving local economy. And so, that's a great thing. However, we still have to look at the, what our unified ordinance wants and what it says, and we need to follow that, because that is part of our, our, our procedures that we're supposed to go by. And, and also our land use plan, the Campbell Land Use Plan, it's not just something that we're supposed to adopt and check off a box and then put it inside of a cabinet and update it again five years later. It is supposed to be a, a living document that's referred to often, and especially when it comes to making land planning decisions. And I'd like to share with you what I found from the UDO, section 1.4 says, "The intent of this unified development ordinance is to foster convenient, compatible, and efficient relationships among land uses." So, we're talking about these vacation rentals in the midst of all these single-family dwellings out there in there. Another one is lessen congestion in the streets. And of course, what we're seeing are these, I saw a fifteen-bedroom and, and twelve-and-a-half-bath cottages starting to pop up, eight, eight and ten is very common now. And, and so there's, now, it's interesting, even though it says eight-bedroom, there was a nine-hundred-and-sixty-square-foot cottage with four bedrooms that could accommodate twelve people or fifteen people. And so, accommodation is a factor that's not even taken into consideration when we're, when I looked at the parking ordinance in our UDO. Another one, there was another one that's a ten-bedroom cottage, and it could accommodate thirty-two people. And that's, you know, I'm figuring at least two people to a car minimum, you know, so that could be sixteen cars in one, one yard or parking space. And when I saw some of these places, just don't quite have that space with the oceanfront setback, and then you got yourself a septic tank area that you have to protect and reserve, can't park on that. So, got looking at this, "Another provision of the UDO is to prevent the overcrowding of land and avoid undue concentrations of population. Preserve the character and quality of residential neighborhoods while providing increased housing choices. Conserve the natural resources, environmental quality of the town and its environments." And so, some of these, this is, you know, the Immortale Campbell Land Use Plan that's amended from time to time shall serve as the policy guide for the administration of the town ordinances. And, and we're expected to comply with it. And where there's conflict, that the more restrictive shall apply. We're seeing that, we're looking at a case now where some, some primary dunes have been bulldozed to put in the swimming pools to accommodate these structures. And again, not, no problem with that, but we can't turn a blind eye to our resources either, because that's why the people come here. And I appreciate them having a pool, because sometimes when it's redfly conditions, they want to get wet. So, but the, so it started out looking at parking, and this thing kind of started growing and growing. So, I see the parking on the right-of-way is just a symptom of perhaps something else that we need to start looking at. And, and looking around the coast, some other areas are taking in special consideration, looking at managing their, the growing trend of large-scale, short-term rentals in their area. So, they're having a, a short-term rental management plan, so we can keep a handle on that and manage the growth of these and not just let them go haphazardly based on an ordinance that's written for true, single-family residences. Like, originally, the, you know, the town founders established this town thinking, these people come in here and stay in a twelve, thirteen-hundred-square-foot cottage on Creosote Highlands and, and go fishing out of it. And those days are gone. We've adapted and changed, I've seen over sixty years of growth here, and I've not once complained about the, the population. I mean, sitting in traffic, nobody likes that, but that's part of it. I've accepted it and moved on with it. But what I think we do need to look at is managing that large-scale, or tearing down the, the existing homes and rebuilding these large-scale rental cottages. And there's several factors that we should look at. And an executive summary of that is, Immortale, like many other coastal community, coastal communities in North Carolina has seen a surge in the popularity of short-term rentals. And I'm not talking about the one and two-bedroom Airbnb's. This is involving the redevelopment of existing three-to-four-bedroom cottages into eight-to-fifteen-bedroom short-term rentals that can accommodate up to thirty-plus guests. While these rentals offer economic benefits, they also pose challenges related to parking along the right-of-way, traffic, noise, and community character. This, and I started drafting a white paper exploring potential impacts of STRs in Immortale, but proposing a framework for sustainable management of these, so they can coexist peacefully and managably within our community. So, I was starting out with the parking thing, and when I did do an analysis of that, I found that our current ordinance is based on square footage of a structure. Again, I found a nine-hundred-and-sixty-square-foot cottage that can accommodate sixteen people, but the ordinance always says you got to have two parking spaces for it. And so, you got sixteen people in this cottage, and I wouldn't want to be in a nine-hundred-and-sixty-square-foot house with sixteen people, but you definitely need more parking spaces. And, and we are seeing, I rode through town and along those front, and I'm seeing more and more, you know, dedicated parking spaces on the town right-of-way. So, that probably was a legitimate issue that I heard from the people when I was doing my campaign, and I'm doing my part now to follow up on that. And, and so, I'd like to come back next month and, and submit this white paper that I'm drafting up with a possible solution framework to hang on. And, and what I'd like to do is present it to the Board of Commissioners, and if they see fit, we can take it to the Planning Board for further study and evaluation. So, this isn't going to be something that's going to happen overnight. I'd like for it to be carefully looked at, thought, well-thought-out, planned, and talked about, involving your input, business input. And so, because there is a, I mean, I heard, I heard other complaints too, not as trendy as the other ones, but it was a quiet home, it got turned into a rental house next door, this is on the Sound Front, and the college students right there swimming, partying at two o'clock in the morning, when before they said they'd never heard any noise out there. So, there are community characteristics that's being impacted, and I just think it's something that we really need to consider. And otherwise, we can just focus on just that one parking thing, but I, I think it's a bigger issue. I think we're just treating it a symptom if we don't address the, the growing trend. We, I don't think we can stick our heads into sand much longer.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
All right, next item up would be discussion of fees and tree permits, Commissioner Wooton.
Thank you. Yes, this is specifically about the idea that we charge sixty-five dollars for a permit to cut down a tree, even if it's a dead tree on your own property. And that just rubs me the wrong way, and I think it rubs a lot of people the wrong way. So, I would like to take whatever actions are necessary to ask the Planning Board to go back to whatever part of the code that is or the ordinance, and say that if the tree is dead, you don't have to, you get a permit, but it's zero dollars. Leave alone whatever it takes to cut down a living tree, that's, I'm not, I don't want to upset that apple cart, but it seems silly to me to pay to cut down a dead tree on your own property, particularly if it's going to fall over and hit your property or somebody else's. I know that there's been some concern around enforcement, and what if somebody comes and says that a tree's dead and we don't think that it is? Well, if they feel they need to go that far to get sixty, to save sixty-five dollars, then they probably need it more than our town does. And we'll just let people, you know, we got to, we got to get the honor system back, and I don't, I hope that it's not abused, but I'll tell you what, if I had a dead tree on my property and I was going to cut it down, I would have a hard time parting with sixty-five dollars to do it. I'd probably cut it down without getting a permit, and that's not what we want. What we want to do is to get permits, so we know where trees are being cut down. And look at all these bay trees that are dying all over the island, and I would love to know how many of them died and where were they? And having a permit system like this that didn't penalize people for cutting down a dead tree, I think would be in the town's best interest long-term. And I think it's a common sense thing we can do relatively easily. I would even suggest that we stop collecting that fee if we need, I don't know if we can just change that right here, right now, or we got to get the Planning Board to do it, but I'd love to stop collecting that fee tomorrow. And again, put it on the honor system and see where we go from there. So, I don't know, how do we operationalize that? Send it back to the Planning Board, ask them to act on it, or can we make a motion to just change the fee?
Commissioner, I think you'd need to have that vetted by the Planning Department and also by legal to see what changes would need to be made to the UDO before a specific proposal is sent to the Planning Board, that would be my recommendation.
Okay, well, I would like then to make a motion to ask the Planning Director and legal to look at exactly that question, and what are the minimum quickest things we can do to implement that change?
I have a question. I remember a lot of discussion about this, and many of you spoke on native vegetation earlier tonight. If I'm not mistaken, and staff, please correct me if I am wrong, this was initiated due to the abuse of folks cutting down trees, the town receiving complaints that live trees were being cut down without notice. And if I'm not mistaken, at that time, the, I was an employee of the town as well, Josh Edmondson would go out and everyone swore the tree was dead. You can look at a stump in most cases and say, I don't think that tree was dead, but you can't prove it when it's a stump. So, I just want to make sure that we all get the, the logic behind why this was initiated and any potential abuse that staff has witnessed in the past. And I would love to hear from some of you who have a lot greater knowledge than I do in reference to native vegetation and trees being cut down. That's a, that's for that consideration.
That's a fair point, and to be clear, I would still say get a permit, but you just don't have to pay for it, so that we know that you're cutting a tree down. There's no question about, did you have a permit, you didn't have a permit. All I'm saying is you shouldn't have to pay to cut down a dead tree on your own property.
So, we have to find a way to pay for that inspector?
I wouldn't inspect it. I'd, again, it trusts the honor system, and if it doesn't work, we can change it back.
Okay.
People, we find people are abusing it.
Okay.
I would rather have people cut down dead trees, since they don't fall on their neighbor's house.
I completely agree.
Okay.
And I think that this is another reason why I've been kind of wanting to support staffing a, a better staff planning department. One, people, I understand we have some, one, I think Greg Hayes has been added to the planning department now, I don't know what percent of his capacity is, is in planning. But, and I think we have another part-time planner I just saw on the website that we added up, no?
No, sir. So, we have our Planning Director, which is Mr. Seberg. Greg Hayes is the Assistant to Support Mr. Seberg. And then we have Artie Dunn, who was brought on post-retirement to help us with tree inspections. And when we first started, we were doing approximately fifty permits per month on average at no cost. And then the Town Board at the time said that that became excessive. We wanted to make sure that we had a way to fund that inspector in a part-time capacity, which derived your sixty-five-dollar permit. And in 2023, if I'm not mistaken by memory, I believe staff pulled that they provided one-hundred-and-eighty-four tree permits and inspections correlating to around thirteen thousand dollars, which helped offset Mr. Artie Dunn's salary, or potentially anyone who would be on that inspection. And to take you back, this became such an issue that we hired the Assistant to Michelle Leitner, which was Jeff Hall, at the time it was Josh Edmondson and Jeff Hall. And we brought that person in to do those inspections. So, there's been two sides to this conversation. One is preservation of the critical and finite resource that we have on the island. And then there was a high demand that there was a lot of vegetation removal. So, the previous Town Board asked staff to create the Call Before You Cut program, which we did that. So, we started the Call Before You Cut, then it was requiring a permit, so we went to that phase. And then it became so important that there was a lot of pushback from the, the public, that they wanted to see more, I don't even want to use the term punitive, they wanted more oversight into there. So, we did that, and we worked through development of that sixty-five-dollar permit. So, it wasn't an evolution, I think, as Commissioner Sanderson's indicating. We'll do whatever you'd like and find any details and data and report back to you as quickly as you can.
Thank you.
How many applications for trees do we get a week or a month, or?
Annually in 2023?
No, no, just like a weekly basis.
Right, so annually in 2023, we had the one eighty-four, and it's going to vary based on time of year. So, we can, we give you the previous board, as well as anyone that receives that week, the manager's weekly count, every month we track that, so we can show you that data. We track each and every month.
I mean, I was the Chief Code Enforcement Officer at Pine Hill Shores, which has one of the most stringent tree ordinances I've ever encountered. And I was pretty much a one-man band there, and I was able to maintain a workload of inspections and doing a bunch of other duties, I wore several hats there, as well as going out and looking at trees. But we had a Community Parents Commission, they were volunteers, and they would go out and look at the trees for us.
Sure.
And maybe we could have a volunteer tree commission that could go out and help us out with that, with free service, you know, with accolades, of course.
Where's Carol, she sounds like she knows about trees.
So, I think there's a way we could do this, especially if it's a dead tree, because I, I agree, I, I don't want to charge anyone. When I was campaigning, again, I refer back to that, because I have, it was a great experience. But the, this one person had a tree from their property fell, was landing on their neighbor's tree, obviously dead and distressed, it was, needed to be cut up. And he requested an inspection and had to wait, I think he said like three or four days. Someone came out and told him it was going to be a sixty-five-dollar fee, and he said, fine, then I'm gonna let my neighbor pay for it then. And so, that kind of situation. And that should have just been like, sir, just go ahead and remedy the tree. Or if we had a, a tree commission that could go out, or whatever, a pretty committee or something that could go out and look at it and just say, yes, sign off on it, go. I think we could really do that in this community with the talented volunteers that we have here.
So, great suggestions. I think your initial question to me is, who do we have in the Planning Department? I want to make sure I've answered you clearly. It's Mr. Seberg, Mr. Hayes, and then currently part-time, we have Artie Dunn working up to twenty hours a week.
And what percent of Greg Hayes' services going toward planning?
In excess of ninety percent.
Ninety percent, okay.
Yes, sir.
And just for the record, I have no opposition to cutting dead trees or charging, I just want to make sure that we're seeing the big picture and know the historical battle, because I have sat in this boardroom out there and watched this room fill up over trees coming down. And I think many of you were in the same audience, and many of you were participating in those arguments about those trees coming down. So, I just want to make sure that, that we're not eliminating something that's going to make what was a major issue resurface. That's, that's all.
Great point, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. Do we need any action regarding that?
I believe Commissioner Wooton has a motion on the floor to have the Planning Department review-
And legal, yeah, look at what would be required. I think that'll help inform a decision.
Okay, I'm sorry. I believe Commissioner Wooton has a motion on the floor to ask the Planning Department, legal, to review the permit, that the issue of fees being charged for the removal of dead trees. So, there needs to be a vote on that, Mr. Mayor.
Is it reasonable to ask if there are any specific staff requests to be added to that motion, or are there no specific staff requests?
That wouldn't be a Planning Board consideration.
Right, okay. All right, so the motion on the floor is as stated, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion's carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, we have some appointments. Item, well, it was, yeah, item number sixteen, Board of Commissioners' appointments, we have three vacancies. Four terms on the Golf Card Advisory Committee have concluded. One of those committee members, Jim Blanton, is interested in being reappointed for another two-year term. The Board has asked to reappoint Mr. Blanton and three new members, so I'll open it up to the Board for discussion.
I make a motion to reappoint Mr. Jim Blanton to another term on the Golf Card Advisory Committee.
All right, Commissioner Sanderson has a motion on the floor- Commissioner Sanderson has a motion on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. The motion is carried.
I'd like to bring up a candidate. I was reviewing the different people there, and one really stood out was James Oski Michaels, I think it says. Sorry, I missed the part of the name there, but I think, just reading through their resumes and stuff, and he just kind of stood out for me a little bit. So I don't have three, but I think he would make a good, good board member there. So I, do you want to talk about him, or do you want me to make a motion and see if he'd like?
I landed on the same candidate, so maybe we could just vote.
I did as well.
Yeah. So I'd like to make a motion to appoint James Oski Michaels.
Osika.
Osika, thank you. Osika to the golf cart advisory committee set to expire January 2026.
All right. Commissioner Taylor has the motion to appoint Mr. Michaels. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. The motion is carried. One. Two more for the golf cart.
I similarly landed on Mr. Roger Goltz, who I went and tried to look across geographically the different parts of the island, and it turns out we didn't have anybody apply from the east end. And I kind of understand that because I'm one of the, one of the spots that I vacated from the golf cart committee. And I know it's tough operating and having a golf cart down there because there's only so many places you can go. And that's reflected in who, who has applied to be on the committee. Mr. Goltz has got an address here in the center of town, and in consideration of the information he provided on his application, he struck me as he'd be a good fit to that committee. And that's, so I would like to make a motion to nominate him unless there's further discussion on it.
Sounds like a name, sir.
Goltz, G-O-L-T-Z.
All right. Commissioner Wooten has a motion on the floor to appoint Mr. Goltz.
Aye.
Favor?
Aye.
Favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried. And two down, one to go for golf cart.
I have one other. I'll throw it out there again. I, I looked through all the applications carefully with an eye. Having served on that particular committee, trying to balance out the experience that knowing who's still on the committee. The other gentleman that stood out to me was Michael Lynch, who is similarly in the, on the west end or Coast Guard Road section of town on Sea Dunes Drive. And I think similarly, there's a different set of challenges that come with golf carts down there, not being able to get to the center of town because you can't drive on Coast Guard Road. There's a lot of discussion around parking, the considerations for transiting across Coast Guard Road. I think it's important to have folks with that perspective. And I know Mr. Lister is no longer on the committee, so I thought that having somebody from down there would be a good fit.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to nominate Mr. Michael Lynch for the golf cart advisory committee.
Commissioner Wooten has made a motion to appoint Michael Lynch. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion is carried. All right. So that takes care of golf carts. And there is one planning board vacancy to be filled, so I'll open it up and discussion for the board, from the board, sorry.
Yeah, I was reviewing some of that. Mr. Mayor, if I could talk for a second on that. Some other notes here. So I, similar, did the same thing. We had quite a few candidates sign up to be on it, and that's great for our town to want so many people to serve. And the way I looked at it was trying to see what type profession or expertise each person had on that committee. And, and then I, and then I kind of researched the person a little bit more, what kind of resume they got. So I saw on the committee so far, we have one engineer, one person that's with the water department. We have an interior and exterior designer, and then we have a contractor or builder that heads up the whole committee. So it kind of keeps, there's so many factors to look at when you're on a planning board, for example, how you're looking at the way things look. And I'd like them to kind of plug all that information together. And one guy jumped out to me was Jim Dubalvik. He was an insurance guy. And I thought, we don't have an insurance person on there could look at, you know, is there any kind of insurance threats that we're proposing to send up to the commissioner's board? So my candidate is, who I would like to appoint, is Jim Dubalvik and, for that seat. And I can make a motion, or we can talk about some more candidates before then.
I'd like to talk about a candidate. I've received numerous emails. I've talked to people in the community about Tany or Tony Browder. He's an engineer. He's also, he does civil engineering. He does storm waters. And in fact, he's done a lot of stormwater engineering in Emerald Isle. He's, he ran for commissioner, town commissioner. And, and speaking with him, he's, he's also a very common sense and very practical person. And I think we need more common sense applied in here. And I'd like to emphasize, not only did I see, like, I've talked about a, what we saw was a trend growing in Emerald Isle. Now, we also are approaching a point in our growth and our development of this town where we need to appoint more than just somebody that's just a good buddy or, hey, hey, man, I voted for you, I'm gonna get you in, or to fill a position like that. We need to appoint someone that's going to be able to really strategically help our town grow and accommodate the growth from I-42 that's getting ready to impact our town. It's coming. That's another issue we can't stick our heads in the sand about. And we, you heard about the water issues. That's, we got another problem right there. So we have these ongoing issues that, that probably just your normal person, you know, and I appreciate the applications we got. We got a slew of great people who applied, and, and I applaud each and every one of them for wanting to volunteer to jump into the frying pan. But in this case, I, I think that Tany Browder is, is certainly who we need on this planning board. The other engineer, his term expires, I think, in a month, and he may or may not want to be appointed again. And in fact, I think something we're going to be discussing, I hope in the near future, I requested that, that we discuss that position and maybe at closed session. I don't know. But it's something I did request it with the mayor and with the, with the board that we discuss that position. So with that, not knowing the future of whether we're going to be able to retain an engineer on the planning board, I heard people speak, and I'm gonna support that. I would like to nominate Tany Browder.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Sanderson?
Well, I'll.
Nope, sorry.
I'm sorry.
I was just giving.
Yeah, no, I.
I'd like to go next.
I feel like a public service overachiever because I've worked with both Tany and Jim on the golf cart committee. Tany was the chairman and Jim was the vice chairman. I really like both guys, respect them greatly. My head came to, when I went through the candidates, and we actually got a great pool of candidates, and I would encourage the town to maintain those applications so we know who to reach to in the event we have future openings come up. I love that there's so many folks engaged and want to be a part of the solution and helping to, to shape things around this town. But when I went through all those resumes, I, my eye was drawn directly to Tany Browder and for the reason that he is an engineer and he, and the thing is, he could explain to me, and I'm not an engineer, exactly some pretty, I guess they would be complex, maybe not if you're an engineer, but to me, they sounded complex. And he was able to explain things in a really simple, common sense way to me. And I believe he might be related to half of Sound Drive, so he's well-connected in the community and knows what, knows what's going on. Every event that we went to, fundraising and everything else, we had folks really engaged with them. And I know he did get a couple hundred votes running for commissioner in his most recent election. So I think he stood out to me as being plugged in to the community and having exactly the kind of background that we need on that planning board. And oh, by the way, the seat we're talking about filling is the one that I vacated, and I am not embarrassed to say, Tany's probably a better fit for that seat than I was because of his extensive background in engineering and engineering on Emerald Isle. So I would, I would go in the Tany Browder camp.
And then I'd like to add something else, too. It was interesting to hear Commissioner Taylor talk about the qualifications for a planning board member, and that that's taken into consideration. I don't want to sound like sour grapes here, but before I filed for commissioner, I filed to be on the planning board. And see, I'm a certified zoning administrator. I've graduated from the Institute of Government School of Municipal Administration. Was a town planner at Pine Hill Shores for 10 years, assistant county manager, coastal resources management for 20 some odd years. And I think I had enough resume fodder to qualify for the planning board, and I didn't even get a, a thank you letter or, or anything. And that's, that's something I hope we, we do in the future, is acknowledge the people who applied if they don't get selected. Because I didn't even hear any results of anything until I heard of the appointment, which was fellow Commissioner Jay Wooten.
Sorry, Roy.
And so I appreciate the fact that, that we look at backgrounds and everything because that's what I base mine on, was the background and how could this person contribute to this, to our needs and the planning for the future of our town and where we're going to be at in the future. So I appreciate that and, and not putting any politics or good old boy system into it for myself. I'm, I'm really and truly, from my heart, think I'm supporting the best candidate. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Mayor, it sounds like we got two good candidates. I'd love to hear from the other end of the table down there.
Yes. And I wanted to reiterate, we are extremely fortunate to have the incredible pool of talent that we did apply in this round of accepting applicants. I too would love to see those applicants kept on file, as I believe the town clerk currently does, and for this board to go back to that same pool of applicants and for, for the future, as well as opening it to any new ones. I believe that the more opinions that you can get, or especially in areas of expertise in any group, the better rounded and the more solid the decision is that you're going to come to. And I, I think that's true in, in most groups, that there, there needs to be diversity amongst them, and everyone should be represented. I will support Jim Dubalvik for appointment to the planning board.
Thank you, ma'am. Sounds like we have two, two. How do we proceed there, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. My advice would be to call a roll call vote of the commissioners, and if that bears out with the votes, if it's a two to two in this event, in this event, you would be the tie vote.
Thanks.
Tiebreaker.
Thanks. Okay. Roll call vote. We'll start with you, Commissioner Taylor.
I stand by what I said, Jim Dubalvik.
One Dubalvik. Commissioner Wooten?
Mr. Browder.
One Mr. Browder. Commissioner Brownlow?
Browder.
Two Browder.
Dubalvik.
Dubalvik. All right. First time in two years and some change. I told you I never wanted to be here, and I still don't right now. I'll say that I did read through the application packets of everybody, and some of those people I don't know, but their resumes were ridiculously impressive, way smarter than me. Some of those people I've known since, before I even moved here 11 years ago full-time. They have been, for clarity and transparency, they were not nominated. I do believe in the diversity of the board. We do currently have an engineer. I'm not going to speak to term or reappointment, not reappointment. I don't think that would be fitting based on all factors that I know. And my simple brain, I think we have two very, very good candidates here, but my vote would go for Mr. Dubalvik. Anything else we need on that item?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So we will move on to comments from our town clerk, attorney, and manager. Sarah?
You are? Yeah. No, we do keep the applications on file, just so you all know, the new board, technically or typically what we'll do, if it's a shorter one, we email them first and ask. If a long time passes, then we go ahead and send out the new, you know, apply today and put it out on our outlets. So that's what we do. We can always go back to the applicant pool that we keep on file. And I'm sorry you weren't contacted. We are working on that, though. We've got a much better software system now and an easier way to do it, and we're putting some things into place.
Thank you, ma'am. That's, that's a first. I'm so happy.
It was a first for you and for us.
I was going to ask for a motion to make you do a comment next time. Thank you, Sarah. Ms. Quattlebaum, any comments?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Zap?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I wanted to thank everyone that came out yesterday. We hold our annual hospitality meetings, and traditionally, we had held them in this space. This room held over 40 people. And yesterday, for the hospitality portion, which was our realtors, our property managers, our V R B O, Airbnb, and all rental maintenance companies, we had over 80 people in the room. And we were very thankful to do that. In the afternoon, we had our hospitality focus on restaurants, bars, shops, and other small establishments. We had over 30 people in the room. So yesterday, we had this opportunity to share with approximately 110 of our constituents, stakeholders, property owners and businesses in Emerald Isle. It was fantastic. Somebody had mentioned the use of the Islander space, and I would like to thank the Islander team, ownership, and staff that they provided us that space for our board retreat the last two years at no charge, and they have provided us that space again for our hospitality meetings yesterday at no charge. And what we shared was the statistical report for all that Emerald Isle's doing in 2023. We had introduced our staff members and team members and answered any questions from the floor for all the people that were with us. It was extremely well-attended, very motivating, and it's great to continue our partnership. One specific area was the continuation and enhancement of beach safety, and we are very thankful that in 2023, we have a 100% survivability rate. And again, that is our ultimate goal and our prayer for 2024. I can answer any questions that the board has. I just wanted to go ahead and take that time to thank everybody that, that came out yesterday and spent a good hour and a half with us at the 10:00 a.m. and then again at the 2:00 p.m.
Thank you, sir. All right. Comments from the Board of Commissioners? Commissioner Taylor?
Yeah. First off, the, the vote is, that we just did, that's the first time in my six years been here as a commissioner, seeing that happen. And it played out, it was interesting the way it worked. But, and to have two candidates, I just want to reiterate that bottom line is, I, I use what Commissioner Brownlow did, and I look at each commission, each person that's sitting there and what seat they hold and how they're holding it, what they can bring to that board. And it came, and from my opinion, it came down, and we already had an engineer, so we, we had an empty spot, and an insurance guy filled that spot that I saw. So I want to make that clear. That's, that's the reason, and that's the reason only, that I, I chose Jim, and I thought it was, it was an interesting way it played out. So thanks for the politics on the side of it, how it worked up here and how the voting worked, but it was very, very interesting on that your elected officials played by the book, and it worked really, it, it worked good. I'm sorry it didn't work for your candidate, but in the same sense, I'm sure there'll be times it won't work for the guy that I'm pushing the next time, too. Another factor I'd like to talk about, too, is the setbacks. I've reached out with quite a few people dealing with the setbacks with the 10 feet and the 15 feet, and I wasn't sure when it was the proper time to talk more about the setbacks part of it. I would like the planning board to, if, if this board's so, would like to have them revisit that. And the part I'd like for them to revisit is between the 10 foot and the 15 foot. It's come up with some ideas to present to us. If, if we were to go to 10 feet, if there's an option in there that it would be a, and I've talked some with some firemen about this also, if that, if we slid it back from 10 to 15 feet and we're back at 10 feet with a, with a, I'm trying to think the right word to say it, that there would be a firewall. That 10 foot would, would have a, a certain type of firewall, a constructed firewall. So if you're at the 15 foot, it'd be a normal building again, but if you slid in and you came into that 10-foot spot, then that normal wall that comes with that house, I think there's some special material and stuff that would protect it more, and that would make the, make me feel a lot better. Because when we talked about the setbacks a year ago, it was, we had seen a fire out on Coast Guard Road and saw how fast the fire spread. And the whole thing that was, for me personally voting on the setbacks, was the concern of[1785.47] of the fire and giving the fire department enough time to get out there. And we were also, I, I sit on the fire department committee and the response time, because of the traffic in the summertime, had really dropped back a lot due to all the extra traffic that's here and stuff. So I was trying to give the fire department more time to get there if the, um, uh, beach catches on fire. So, um, if possible, if this board would agree to it, I would like for the planning board to review the possibility and maybe report back to us, um, this type of wall that I'm talking about and if that's availability. But I'd like to hear more about, um, adjusting these setbacks if we can still protect it with this firewall, if that makes sense to everybody. Sorry I stumbled with my words a little bit, but I'm, I'm not a fireman.
Thank you, sir. All right, uh, Commissioner Wooten?
Yes, um, I would second that, Commissioner Taylor. I think it is, and I think that the, um, state's fire codes already address a lot of that proximity and the materials you need to build. And, um, I think that we can certainly get back to that 10 foot and preserve the fire safety of, um, the folks that are inside those buildings. So I, I would support that, that we wanna have them look at that again. Couple of things, and the, the topic came up about, um, public engagement and listening as well as broadcasting. A couple of shout outs. One to Paige Taylor Ward. Hopefully everybody got the email that said, hey, here are your elected officials. If you care about this insurance thing, please send it out. Well, Paige called, um, it was probably, I don't know, seven o'clock one night, sent a note to Mr. Cruz. He turned it around, probably within 12, 14 hours, there was a draft of an email that got blasted out to everybody and they ultimately found their way to our elected officials. And importantly, the insurance commissioner. So that was a great example of somebody had a great idea, they shared it and we got it in the right hands as quickly as we can, and it turned into an actionable thing that benefits this town. So thank you, Paige, for, for thinking of that. Similarly, Diane Hampton sent a note asking about, why do I have to pay anything to cut down a dead tree on my own property? That resonated with me. I hope that we can figure out whatever hoops we need to, um, if we need to come up with money for the planning board, we probably ought to find it somewhere else instead of charging somebody $65 to cut down a tree on their, the, a dead tree on their own property. Similar to that, I've got a lot of feedback about trash cans on the beach. When do we get our trash cans back? Uh, we talked about it at the budget retreat. Um, I think we're looking at it. I would encourage everybody, I know Mr. Zap will help figure out exactly when we put trash cans back, where they go. So if you want one at the end of your walkway, I would send an email to Mr. Zap or call him or do both and let him know so that when it does come time to put these trash cans back on the beach, they'll know exactly where to put them. And then if nothing else, if we end up doing a survey, you'll make sure that your email is on the list that the survey goes out to. If the survey results are anything like what I hear walking through the island, food lion or Publix, I'm sure we're gonna put those things back where they belong. But, um, it's definitely a two-way street. And finally, I'll go back to Sherri's comment earlier. We do need to schedule these, um, listening sessions, conversation points, whatever you wanna call them, where we get two of us together with interested folks within the community and just have a conversation dialogue, not so much decision-making or anything else, but, uh, education. I know I learn a lot every time I talk to the folks out there, um, anywhere where I run into the folks that live in this great town. And sometimes I can explain to them something that they're like, well, this seems stupid. Why do you do it that way? And when you explain it, they're like, oh, okay, now, I may not like it, but at least I understand. So I think it's critical to establish and maintain that kind of communication, communication channel. So I will take an action to, um, drive towards setting some of those up. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Brownlow?
Can I defer to, uh, Commissioner Sanderson and then come back to me for a minute, please? Thank you.
Sure. Commissioner Sanderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I would also like to see, uh, Billy Farrington's, uh, request to go back to the planning board in reference to the 10 foot versus 15 foot setback as well as the process of a stormwater per, engineered permit for each lot for development. I'd like to see if, if they could revisit that. I certainly value the, the actions taken by previous boards, but, um, I think it would be best if we, as a primarily newly seated board, uh, hear that from the planning board directly and address any questions that we have at that point.
Thank you, ma'am. If you're ready, sir.
I just would like the people that, that voted for me to know that I am working very, very hard to, uh, fulfill what I told you I would try to fulfill for you. Um, it's, this is only our second full meeting. Um, it's obviously a split board and, uh, and it's, it's, I feel like I'm working against the grain most often. Remember that you, you folks have the power to vote. That's how I got here and how we all got here. And, uh, and, and so if, if your will and, you know, what, what you told me you wanted is not being done, it's not because I'm not trying. Um, but you can carry that message with you to the polls that next time there's an election. I brought up during the retreat, uh, an I-42 strategic plan committee. I haven't heard anything else on that. Matt, is there a procedure that we need to do to get that started? Please let me know if there is.
Yes, sir. So if the board desires to do something and you all take action, we'll assist you however you choose to see fit. So Mayor would turn back to your team.
What was that last part? I'm sorry.
It's, it's on the board to make that determination. Yes, sir. We're here to assist you however you see fit.
If the board so chooses to appoint an I-42 committee.
So would we need any formal action to?
Yes.
Can you help articulate what that would exactly sound like so we can make it happen?
Yes, sir. Regarding any of these proposals, until the board takes formal action, it's not technically considered an instruction to staff. So if the desire of the board is to appoint an I-42 strategic planning committee, a motion should be made and a vote taken on that as well as any other issue that needs to be examined by staff or the planning board.
Okay. Would you like to make that motion, sir?
I'll just, we'll hope, put that on hold for right now. Um, I just wanted to know what the next procedure we had to do. Because I, it seemed like when I brought it up, it, it seemed to have support. It's hard to tell nowadays what, what, when we do, do or do not have support. The Lee Avenue Culvert, uh, the marsh has substantially died out there. It's bearing, it smells that low tide. I went out there the other day and saw dead fish in the water, got some photos of it. And I'd like to know if there's a recovery plan for that.
Would you like me to answer that?
Yeah, you're, you're well better at it than I am, sir.
Sure. We have met with KAMA there, with Heather Styren and also with her assistant. The issues and response from KAMA was that that situation has remedied itself over the period that we took photographs in September and October. If the board would like us to do more or to communicate with any other directors at KAMA, we'd gladly help to remedy to your satisfaction or to KAMA's.
Yeah, I think, um, this is my personal opinion, but in, in former professional opinion, that I, I think it'd be good to call in someone like Coastal Federation who does marsh restoration and thing because it's been quite a while. And usually marsh that I've seen is pretty resilient, it bounces back pretty quick. I've investigated a lot of dredge and field violations and seen marsh completely buried under field come back substantially a lot faster. So something's going on that this marsh is not rebounding and I'd like to have it further evaluated if that's the will of the board, um, and find out what we can do. I think Coastal Federation, they've done a lot of substantial restoration projects and they would probably, uh, do this as a volunteer project, wouldn't even cost, no cost to the town possibly, except if we sprig it with spartan or something, uh, vegetation. So if that's, uh, something that the board would, uh, if I could make a motion for that now, that we could, uh, inquire about a recovery plan possibly for the, uh, Lee Avenue Culvert marsh area?
So your motion is to, for the board to request staff investigate report back to the board, uh, a recovery plan, uh, scenario?
Yeah, even if it's just, you know, we're gonna have Coastal Federation come out and give us an opinion or, uh, assist us with that. Even, that'd be a first step. That'd be great.
All right. Commissioner Brownlow has a motion on the floor. Correct me if I'm wrong, to, uh, request that staff reach out to Coastal Federation to, uh, investigate a recovery plan and report back to the board. Is that correct? Motion is on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried.
I heard that the people speaking out there tonight also about doing the meet and greets and that is something I said I would do. And I'm a startup, uh, probably within the next week or so. Um, I don't know of a way to advertise it other than, because I'm not on Facebook a whole. I do have a, uh, my, well, previous campaign, uh, vote for Brownlow Commissioner website that I posted on, still has a lot of people looking at that. I don't go on those, uh, room group chats because of the trolls and stuff situation. I'm just not a big Facebook fan anyway, but, um, I'll, I'll try to get the word out to you where and when I'm gonna be meeting. And if you'd like to meet with me, I'll certainly let you know and, and you can come to meet. It will not be on town hall property. I want it to be on neutral property where you feel safe, where you feel like you can say what you want to. So it'll be probably at, maybe at a business or a coffee shop. It can be in your living room if that's where you want, if you wanna host it. But I, I'm gonna start meeting with you folks again because that's what I, I heard and learned a lot. And I'm gonna show you that, uh, that I am trying to fulfill what I told you I would work for you for. And then, uh, there was just so much more to it I wanted to say, but I'm just kinda rattled right now because I just wanted to get away from the good old boy politics system and just, just do the right thing up here, what the people wanted. Without any agendas or anything, just, let's just put together a good, functional town and, uh, and committees and boards that, all in the same mission and not be split. I do appreciate the fact that there's actually dissension on the board. That's fantastic. That's democracy at work. But right now, we just, uh, I wish, uh, it was more, more in harmony, uh, in doing what the people wanted. Because as I campaigned, I'm not any smarter than anybody in this room. And one way I find out what's going on is by talking to you folks out there and getting the feel for what, what you want. And then I'm gonna come up here and implement that. Some of it I might not agree with it, but I'm gonna implement it anyway. That's what I hear from the majority of the people. And so, uh, that's what you put me here for. And, and I appreciate your support, appreciate your patience, and, uh, and I hope we can accomplish some of the things that we set out to do. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. We will, or I will now ask for a motion to go. I have no comments. I will ask for a motion to go.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry to interrupt you. Um, I was listening to attorney here. Do we need to make a motion to send that back to the planning board? Because we didn't ever do that for, um, to review the 10 foot, 5 foot setbacks? Because didn't you say we had to?
We did. Okay, all right. Let's recover that.
I'd like to make a motion, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, send back to planning board to review the 10 foot, um, setbacks and 15 foot setbacks with the firewall, uh, for the 10 foot section. Um, is there anything you want to add to that motion that I'm not saying correctly or the rest of the board?
If you'd like to include the stormwater review in that as well, then?
Yes.
I would add that, but, okay.
Yeah, that sounds good. End the stormwater review. Back to planning board.
Commissioner Taylor has a motion on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. No comments by me. I will ask the board for a motion to go into closed session, uh, to discuss personnel. Uh, before I ask for that motion, I'd like to remind everybody in the audience tonight. One, first off, thank you for coming. Uh, it was great to see you. Uh, we will now go into closed session to discuss personnel. Once we're done with that discussion or once the board is done with that discussion, I'll ask for a motion to come out of closed session and then immediately ask for a motion to